All right, good evening to everyone who's here and watching online. I'd like to call to order the February 23rd, 2021 Regular School Board Meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School District, number 13. If you would, please rise if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we get going here, I would like to read our statement about our electronic meetings. It says, "Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations, the Minnesota Directive to residents to stay at home and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic, this meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D, Point 21, meeting by telephone or other electronic means. School board members are reminded to mute their microphones or phone when they're not speaking. School board members wishing to speak should raise their hands and then wait to be recognized by the chair. The chair will determine the order in which board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the board member should unmute the microphone or phone, speak, and then mute their device. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Each board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded. Access to the recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as reasonably possible." All right, thanks. Our mission statement. Oh, sorry, before we do that, let's do roll call. Laura, roll call, please.
Samurai?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Grandland?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Palmer, here. And Superintendent Stenvik?
Here.
All right, thank you so much. Our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner all belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Fun thing tonight, we're going to get started with some Highlander highlights. We get to honor the recipients of the Minnesota Scholastic Arts Awards from our schools. And before the meeting, the pictures were scrolling through, and it was pretty impressive. I'd welcome Hannah Stark, their teacher, before we get going here, but I'd like to read this statement. It says, "Twenty-two Columbia Heights High School and Columbia Academy art students earned a total of thirty-eight Gold Keys, Silver Key, and Honorable Mentions in the 2021 Minnesota Scholastic Art Awards, a competition organized by the art educators of Minnesota, art educators, excuse me, of Minnesota. The art students taught by Columbia Heights High School art teacher Sarah Honeywell, Hannah Stark, and Columbia Academy art teacher Arnie Hamel, earned four Gold Key Awards, fifteen Silver Key Awards, and nineteen Honorable Mentions." Well done. The Minnesota Scholastic Art Awards was established in 1923, almost 100 years ago. Wow. And is the longest-running program of its kind in the nation. This year's competition had more than 2,000 entries and student portfolios from across the state. All students award honorees will be recognized at the 2021 MSAA Ceremony on Saturday, February 27th, at 2:00 PM in a virtual ceremony. Should I invite the teachers to say something before we read the names? Do you think that's the way to go? All right, thank you to Hannah Stark, Sarah Honeywell, and Arnie Hamel. Who's leading us off?
I could lead us off.
All right, Ms. Honeywell, thank you.
Hi there. I just want to just say a little bit about the strength of will of our students and how relentless they are to going after their goals, and they want to be so successful. And I think this year has brought out, in many, many ways, the essence of who they are and the art that they've made is truly self-generated and self-determined. You know, obviously, by nature of our online learning situation, the self-determination is what you're really seeing, and the deep roots that Columbia Heights Arts has. Like, the whole program is pretty tight, and those kids were able to continue with it with a little less guidance this time around, and it turned out to be so exciting. We're very proud, but not really surprised either. Just really proud.
Yeah, I just 100% echo Sarah. I think that this, you know, so often, we, as teachers, get accolades, but this is really a year where we can firmly say, like, no, this stands on the shoulders of students. Like, we provide spaces, and I'm proud of our team, but I'm always amazed at how much our students bring to the table and how the beauty of our community is really displayed through the work that they make. I also think about the students who received awards and how they've been through our districts from a young age. Simon's here, he went to Valley View. Burke is here, I know he went to North Park. Like, we have such a strong program from a young age. So even though Sarah and I are here, it's really Arian and Joy Abalicious and, you know, Arnie and all of these people, and all of you and what you provide for us as a district. So, thanks for letting us do all of this good work, and congratulations to the students.
All right, I guess I get the honor, then, of reading the names of all of these students and their awards. I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name. I do my best. Our first student is a ninth grader. Can I say that? It says right here. Do I read that they're grade, or no?
I think typically we just, yeah, we've said their names in the past.
Just their names, or...
We've said their names and grades in the past.
Okay. Okay. Javin Renjit, maybe, won a Silver Key. Lily Kleinschmidt also won a Silver Key. Natasha Rivera won a Gold Key. Alexa Durley won a Silver Key and three Honorable Mentions. Dahlia Hernandez Kuhn won a Silver Key. Danielle Dixon won an Honorable Mention. Ishmohan Abdurrahman won a Silver Key. Kiara Griffin won a Silver Key. Lydia Kennedy won an Honorable Mention. Brooke Desta won a Silver Key. Hanan Hussain won a Silver Key and a Gold Key. Simon Graves won a Silver Key and an Honorable Mention. Tenzin Searing won a Gold Key and a Silver Key. May Skaya won an Honorable Mention. Malat Mezgabi won an Honorable Mention. Alexander Avandano won a Silver Key. Ayona Burton won an Honorable Mention. Jessica, I'm going to need your help on this one. Oh, you can't see what I see. This is a lot of letters that I'm not familiar with. Say that again?
Uthalima.
Thank you so much. Won three Honorable Mentions. Keanu Johnson won 12 Honorable Mentions. Michelle Mendez Bravo won four Honorable Mentions. Tamisha Castro Bello won a Gold Key and four Silver Keys, and Tenzin Dolkar won two Honorable Mentions. And you can see, if you saw the PowerPoint again before, if you tuned in early, the artwork was scrolling between those who had won the Silver and Gold Awards, and we were all very impressed with your work. So if you're out there, thank you for joining us, to the students who are here and the teachers. Do any board members have any questions or things they'd like to add, or Superintendent Stenvik? Lorian.
Hey, just a comment as someone who's passionate about the arts. Just congratulations. You've done phenomenal work. You're very talented, and just everything that is happening in the world right now, to have something so incredible to look at and almost distract me from. This is, you guys just did a great job. So, and for those of you that are on the meeting tonight, thank you for joining us, and I'm so very proud of you. So, great work, you're very talented.
Yeah, I just want to echo what Lorian said, and just a huge congratulations to all of you artists out there. It's incredible, that's a huge award, and, you know, will look great on your resumes as you're going into the next level of your education and whatnot. Keep doing the great work that you're doing. And I think for us as board members, it's kind of fun to hear names and see students for a minute, because we're feeling a little disconnected, too. So this is a really bright light. And also, thank you to the teachers that are here, and also for acknowledging, you know, the elementary and middle school teachers. This is really a culmination, and I'm so proud of our district and the heart and the arts that we do have. So, thank you all, congrats, students, keep it up.
Yay, other members? All right, well, we appreciate the teachers coming and the students coming after hours, and now that you can see my face, I was just, I just got a text that said, turn your camera on, so. So, thank you for that. Good thing my phone is face-up, I should turn it over now. It's like being in class, right? All right, thank you again for coming. Students, it's not rude, and teachers, if you log off now, I know people think, man, maybe we should stay at the meeting, but you're welcome to stand watch, but if you're like, don't feel guilty about logging off right now. All right, we're going to move on to our agenda, yes, goodbye, guys, our Agenda Approval Adjustments and Announcements and Correspondence. The first is the approval of the agenda. If I could get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Molly? Molly? Okay, Lewis?
Second.
Second, Hala.
Second, Hala. I've been writing these down, so I remember. Discussion on the agenda. All right, hearing none, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Samurai?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, great. Move on to the announcements. March 9th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM is our Regular School Board Meeting here in the Community Room and also via electronic means. March 23rd, Tuesday at 5:30 PM, there's a School Board Work Session, again, here in the Community Room and via electronic means. And then March 29th through April 2nd, there's no school for spring break, so plan ahead. And we'll move on to correspondence. Superintendent Stenvik, any correspondence?
Madam Chair, there's no correspondence at this time.
All right, great. We'll move on to Communications to the Board. Citizen Employee Representatives may, at this point, any citizen or employee may briefly address the School Board. The Board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and, if desired, request that the administration follow up. The Board will not take any action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. All right, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda, which includes the Personnel Report. Could I get a motion to move this forward, please?
Can I pause you real quick?
Yes.
Do we need to say that we had somebody who came to talk about...
For the record?
Right.
Okay, that's a, let's do it. To summarize the Communication to the Board, we had two people come and talk about return to school and the hybrid learning model. Thanks, Lorian. We'll move on to the Consent Agenda now, which contains, again, contains the Personnel Report. Can I get a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
Mary? Mary, all right, thanks. Second?
I'll second, Lorian.
Second, Lorian, great. Discussion. All right, we'll take a roll call, please.
Samurai?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Motion carries, great. We get to go on to the Acknowledgements of Contributions. This is kind of a fun part for me. I have to find that now here in my board book. Sorry, y'all. Doesn't he give the page number there on that one, on the board book? Oh, here it is, found it. Great, it's right, third page from the top. All right, Acknowledgements of Contributions. Whereas, Minnesota Statute 23B.02 permits school boards to receive, for the benefit of the district, requests, donations, or gifts, or any other purpose, and apply the same purpose designated. In that behalf, the Board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupils therein. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13, that the School Board assess with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background of the amount of $500. A donation of $500 was made to Columbia Heights High School by Diane Rothler for student needs. Total fiscal year 2020, 2021 monetary contributions are $63,847.56. Could I get a motion to move this forward, please?
So moved, Hala.
Hala, thanks. Second?
Second, Molly.
Second, Molly. Discussion.
Thank you to our community member for the very generous donation. Again, I know I've said this before, especially at a time that it can be economically challenging for many people to be so generous in the gift to our schools, just greatly appreciated.
Yeah, people's generosity in times of economic uncertainty, and our community has always been so very generous with our schools, and we're just thankful for that.
I was going to say, thank you for prioritizing our schools and our kids at a time when it's so hard for everybody.
Good word. All right, we will move on to Discussions, Reports, and Information Item.
Do we need a vote on that?
Oh, yes, we do need a vote. Wow, thank you. You're like my...
Like you're my Vice Chair today.
It's like I have, yeah, it's like you're here for me, thanks. Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Samurai?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
All right, now that motion carries, because we actually did a roll call vote. Now, we're going to move on to Discussion Items, Reports, and Information Items, and we'll start with reports from members of the Board. So Board members will report on Board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. So, let's start with Mary Grandland.
Well, hello. Since our last meeting, well, since last meeting I was able to be at, I met with Vice Chair Mueller, we had some phone calls, I talked to Superintendent Stenvik, and I've spoken to numerous, numerous, numerous caregivers in our community, students and staff about sort of the upcoming change that we're going to discuss later and later in the agenda. So, that's all.
All right, thanks, Mary. We'll move on to, let's go with Vice Chair Mueller, my little helper. I don't mean to minimize you.
That's, hey, it's all good. Since our last meeting, last week, I attended the Chair Meeting and the Work Session that we had. I also attended the City Council Meeting on Monday as liaison to the City Council, so I did that yesterday. An item to note there, just the city is still doing some great events with the Centennial Celebration. So, lots of fun things that are happening in the city. So, look at the city website for some ideas there on some of the activities and things that are going on. With Member Lewis, we had the Community Engagement Listening Session just prior to this meeting. Really want to thank all of those who came to that. We had 30 participants at that meeting tonight, and it was really just great to have the community involvement there. I also had conversations with Mary Grandland and Superintendent Stenvik, and a number of conversations with community members as well.
All right, let's go with Molly.
Hi, everyone, thanks, Natty. Since our last meeting, I have attended, whether it was virtual or in-person, some basketball games. I hate to sound like a brick and record, but it is always a good opportunity to still see some of our students doing some activities, as limited as it might be. And that's kind of what keeps some of us going and our energy in this. So, also had some great conversations with Superintendent Stenvik and a lot of helpful information, thank you so much. I also, as Lorian stated, attended the Community Engagement Session prior to this. One thing that I just want to make sure and note before we forget is that a couple of different parents really wanted to make sure to thank administration for your opportunity to get our teachers vaccinated, and share that a lot of our students are really, really excited and happy that our teachers will be getting those vaccinations. And so that was really important to the students, to convey their appreciation, because they care about their teachers quite a bit. And, like I said, it was more than one parent that shared that sentiment. So, thank you to administration for working so hard and diligently on that. And that's all I have to report. Thank you, Natty.
All right, great, let's move on to Hala.
All right, so, since the last meeting I attended, I've had many communications and conversations with staff, parents, and community members.
All right, thanks, Hala. We will move on to Laura.
Well, obviously, last week, I did attend the Work Study Session and various communications with community members and staff. And thank you all for sending so many detailed emails, really well-thought-out, and it gives me, it gives me a lot to think about and consider with our decisions this evening. Thank you.
All right, and that leads to me. Before this meeting began, I had a Chair Meeting with Superintendent Stenvik, was then able to, like all of us, have conversations with community members, had a phone call meeting earlier in the week with Vice Chair Mueller, met with Superintendent Stenvik, it seems like that was the popular thing to do this week, and then began a communication to be able to finally get to a Hilltop Board Meeting, a City Council Meeting, so I'm excited to do that next Monday. So, it's been, it's been fun to reach out to the Board at Hilltop, so. Which brings us to Superintendent Stenvik's report.
So, I have a brief report this evening. As mentioned, in collaboration with Anoka County and Fridley Public Schools, we will be able to host a local vaccination clinic. It's this Friday for staff. So because the clinic will be taking place all day through 5:00 PM and perhaps even later, this Friday will be a non-school day for students and a work day for staff. So we're excited about that opportunity for our, for our staff and community at large. I had multiple conversations with board members, and thank you all very much for your time. I'd like to give a shout-out to Dawn Hoyam, because it's her birthday tomorrow, so happy birthday, Dawn. She has to spend it in a management meeting with me.
Fun.
Lastly, very sad news, we lost a beloved staff member, Karen Crady. She worked in Columbia Heights Public Schools for 35 years, and she truly was a fixture at North Park Elementary School, and we will miss her dearly.
All right, thank you, and as Superintendent Stenvik brings that up, just really want to just echo the sadness of the loss for the North Park family and for all of our community. So many of the kids having been through North Park and seeing Karen at that front desk is kind of just a fixture of a warm welcome, and, yeah, she'll be missed greatly. And would like to just, if everyone's okay, take a moment of silence to honor her memory and the service she gave to our kids. All right, and as transitions go, we're excited to move on to hear about our Indian Education Update, and so I would like to welcome Superintendent Stenvik and Valerie Larson, our American Indian Education Mentor Coordinator.
Hi, Valerie, I'm not able to share my screen, Brian.
Veronica's here, too.
I'm Dawn, or Mike, we're going to have to give her permission.
I'll share my screen in just a moment. So, while that's happening, very exciting news for everyone. We have a new chairperson of our American Indian Parent Committee, Veronica Cloud. Veronica's actually a Heights alumni, and she's got wonderful children in our district as well. So as I'm pulling up, here we go, pulling up the presentation. There we are. So I'll go ahead and get started, and then pass it over to Ms. Valerie Larson, who's also here on the screen, our American Indian Mentor and Specialist for the district. So this evening, we're going to be talking about our annual concurrence, and our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And this evening, we'll focus on the core values of community and respect. So just as, actually, new this year, the governance is really on the part of the American Indian Parent Committee, and so they met on February 18th to vote, and we are here to present the information to the Board. So the Board will not take any governance as we have in the past, but a Board signature is required. So, this is the Minnesota State Statute, it's 124D.78, that instructs us to work with our American Indian Parent Committee and determine if there is concurrence or not each year. So a little bit about what the committee does. Reviews data, informs the district American Indian education programs and goals, and makes recommendations to the district and School Board, and votes annually on concurrence. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Veronica and/or Valerie to just say a few words about the program.
Hi, my name is Veronica Cloud. I am alumni. I actually went to North Park, and even went to Central Academy when I used to be Central Middle School as well. I do have an 11-year-old currently at Highland, and I have a set of toddlers, one currently in preschool, and a set of twins that I hope to also have and grow within Columbia Heights community. We did meet recently with Val, just to kind of talk with the Board family members. We have been meeting monthly with the families, just to kind of give each other support, being that our academic year this year has been completely, as we know, a little off and a little abnormal, but just to at least give our students the support that they need. We're currently planning for a powwow this spring, should everything go as planned. But in the past, you know, we've had a lot of really good community engagement to really reach out to our students and help them along the way in finding out what their needs are or what families are looking for in terms of what a child needs to have for representation to really thrive in our community these days.
That sounds like it's my turn, right? This is Valerie Larson, and I think the picture that you see up here now is kind of some of the stuff we did last year. This child here with the beautiful long hair, I think is Veronica's daughter? Does that look right, Veronica?
That's correct, that's Alicia.
That's Alicia. This was a session we had with a pipe carver, a person that also has, he's a courier, and so he showed us, talked about making pipes and how it's done, and how pipestone is only, you know, comes out in only Minnesota, in Minnesota by pipestone, Minnesota, so that was cool. This is Kristen and me at the Sugar Bush last year. We may be able to go out again this year, although there's a sign-up sheet, so we'll see about that. This is one of our students who graduated last year and got...
Hey, Valerie, if you wouldn't mind, maybe not naming and giving details about the students while we're on the call, that would be awesome. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. Yep.
One of our students graduated last year, and this is from the powwow, maybe a year ago, two years ago. So, I apologize for giving names, didn't mean to do that. The only other thing that I want to share is that this year, we have six American Indian graduates, students that work really hard to make sure that they are going to graduate in June. So I am very pleased with that, and I know that some of them struggled, but they've pulled the grades up, and I'm really pleased and proud of them, so I can hardly wait to get their feathers and give them to them at some point, maybe at the powwow. That's about all I have right now, so thank you very much, and...
Thank you, Val. Yes, the committee is exploring the option of having an outdoor socially-distanced powwow, and Val Larson works really hard with our seniors so that we are able to maintain, and we're looking forward to this year. We have a history of a 100% American Indian graduation rate, and they do receive at the powwow a beaded eagle feather, and it's a presentation, so very excited. This committee has stuck together this year, even though we've not been able to meet in person, but really been able to do some things. So, part of the resolution of concurrence is here, where the American Indian Parent Committee issues a vote of concurrence, and so this is the result, that they did indeed vote for concurrence, meaning that the district is following the statute and collaborating with the committee and providing them the necessary input.
Right, questions? Sorry, I have to scroll a little bit here. Laura, I can't, you're not on my front screen, so if you, if your mic's off, go ahead and...
Yeah, I actually, I do have, I have one question. I know the powwow has been an enormously successful annual event, but I was wondering if, if, if there was anything new coming along that, that maybe, something, following the statute and the, and the letter of the law is one thing, but we want to follow the spirit of it, is, is there any other support or something new that you'd like to try that, that maybe you're considering? This is a, this is a really, this program is, is really close to my heart, and I really enjoy the presentations and seeing all the wonderful, the wonderful things and accomplishments that our students are doing. But I guess that's kind of my follow-up question, is, is there anything else that you're working on that you wanted to share with the Board?
So recently, Val Larson arranged to have a virtual, over Zoom, traditional storytelling event, so that happened. I mean, we're, we're having to, you know, just like everyone else, modify things a bit and do, do virtual activities that way. Val has also been working very closely with our agricultural specialist, Wes, to work on curriculum, but in meeting with the, with the Parent Committee, they're really, and if I can speak from my experience at the Parent Committees, we hear a lot about, because we had to cancel the powwow last year, they really are hoping to be able to schedule and plan a powwow outdoors safely, socially distant this year, and, and that's where we're at. Recently, last, was it last week, the Parent Committee met with our Mayor of Columbia Heights Public Schools, or of Columbia Heights City, excuse me, and so she came and had a conversation about the possibility of land acknowledgement. So yeah, there's definitely a few things in the works there.
Oh, that's so exciting. Oh, it's lovely to see you, Val, by the way. I know you can't see me, I don't have a camera, and Veronica, thank you for, for stepping up and leading the Committee, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Other, other questions? All right, well, thank you again Valerie and Veronica for joining us tonight. We're very excited to have you and your heart and concern for the, the students of Columbia Heights, and the time it takes to do something like this, and we're really thankful for you. Have a good night.
Thanks. Thank you, you too.
All right, we will move on to Executive Director Bondo Niambwe for our Achievement and Integration Budget.
Can you see my presentation?
Yep.
Excellent. Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenvik, and members of the Board. Tonight, I am here to present the Achievement and Integration Budget for the 2022 school year. The mission of our school district of Columbia Public Schools is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong and all succeed. The core values represented tonight are all our core values. And tonight, it's an informational session, I'm presenting this information, and I plan to come back on March 9th for, and you, for asking the Board to approve the integration, achievement integration revenue. A brief history, the purpose of the Achievement and Integration Revenue is for, is a Minnesota program that is, you know, that, that we receive funding from the Minnesota Department of Education, to pursue racial and economic integration, to increase student achievement, to create equitable educational opportunities, and to reduce academic disparities based on students' diverse racial, ethnic, and economic backgrounds in the Minnesota Public Schools. And there are two statutes that govern this Achievement and Integration Revenue, which is 124D.861. So in order to talk about the Achievement and Integration Budget, it's important for me to remind us that we have an Achievement and Integration Plan, which is a three-year plan, that each year, we have to present an annual budget that is approved by the Board. And so tonight, I am strictly speaking about the Achievement and Integration Budget and not the plan. But it's equally important for me to remind us that there are three goals. Goal one is reducing disparities, disparities in academic achievement, and goal two is reducing disparities in equitable access to effective and more diverse teachers, and the last goal is increasing racial and economic integration. The Achievement and Integration Budget itself has three parts. So 80% of the funds that we receive are to support direct student services, and 20% of it is to focus on professional development that is directly related to cultural competence so that our teachers can be well-equipped to serve diverse students. And there is another requirement, which is that 10% of that budget, no more than 10% can be spent on administrative cost. It's actually funny when you look at the math, because 80 plus 20 is 100, but there is a 10% tossed in there. And not much of this budget in our district goes to administration. So there is also a timeline for submitting the Achievement and Integration Budget. Of course, since we have a plan in the fall, we present to the public our goals and our achievement to the world-best workforce. And then today, I am presenting to you the Achievement and Integration Budget, and every year, it's due to the Minnesota Department of Education by March 15th, and then there is a report that is submitted on December 1st, and then there is another report that is submitted there. And the same timeline follows for next year. This year is actually our first year of three years, and next year, 2022, is our second year, and the same timeline follows. So in terms of funding, how much money Columbia Public School receives, we will be receiving 1,045.88 plus 36,388 in incentive revenue. So the total of our integration, Achievement and Integration Budget for 2022 is 1,081,466. In comparing that to last year, it's gonna be $12,000 less than we received in 2021. So part of the goals that I stated is that there are strategies that the District put into play to help us meet the objectives of the goals. And so, you know, very, very integrated pre-K-12 learning environment, so support is not only to certain grade, but throughout, from pre-K through 12. Another component that this Achievement and Integration Budget supports, it's family engagement to increase student achievement. We know that when parents are engaged and involved in the lives of their children, students tend to do better. And professional development, which is a substantial component of the Achievement and Integration, so 20% of our funding goes to that, and our Department of Teaching and Learning has done some phenomenal work to bring in speakers and to allow our teachers to continue to learn, as well as staff. And I know that the Board has also been engaged in this work of racial integration. Another component that we fund through Achievement and Integration is Korean College readiness to ensure that students from, students of color can also participate in rigorous coursework as well as other students in our districts and be able to represent our community. And finally, there is a commitment about recruiting and retaining racially diverse teachers, and I believe that we've shared with the Board that there is, our Department of Human Resources is supporting an affinity group of teachers of color in our school district. So some of the other program that we support through the Achievement and Integration Fund is the Avid Program, which we've presented on before. As I said before, it's a K-12 program. And then the early college, you know, at the high school, we're very fortunate to be able to support our high school students, whether it's a ninth-grade college math prep course, or whether it's looking at academic specialists that support students, or, you know, other AP classes. And almost there, but, you know, very, very integrated learning environment, when we think of classrooms that are in our district where students are provided with rich opportunities to explore and learn about concepts that are from diverse experiences, is something that we believe is important for our students to learn from, students who look different from them and to hear from people from different backgrounds. And finally, family engagement is a robust component of our work. And professional development, as I mentioned before, we've had very good speakers from within Minnesota and outside Minnesota, who bring professional development on culturally relevant and equitable practices. And so the funds that we receive are always going to staff, presenters, fees, books, to purchase resources that can help us to, to do better. And finally, you know, the Integration Revenue Program as it is, it's given to school districts who have a 20%, 20% more students of color compared to their adjacent school district. And so our partner in this in the San Antonio-Brighton School District, where every summer, we provide a writing class and a math class, as well as some field trip that students participate in. So these are the components that are funded through our Achievement and Integration Budget, and I would like to know if there are any questions.
All right. Thank you, Molly.
Thanks, Natty, and thanks, Bundo. I'm sorry, Director Niambwe. I really just wanted to touch base on the recruiting of diverse teaching staff. You know, as a Board Member, we, we recognize administration has those duties, we do not, you know, try and overstep or boundaries or whatever, but at the same time, this has been a huge focus in terms of having, having teachers that look like our students. Can you talk a little bit about what is actually being done? I know we've, we've, we encounter a statewide problem, it is not unique to Columbia Heights Public Schools, so I recognize that, but I also just want to know what steps are being taken to have teachers that are more diverse in our district?
Since I'm new to the District, I'm gonna defer that to Superintendent Stenvik, and she can speak to some of the activities, or Director Tuckrell, who's part of the affinity group, can give more detail as to what's being done.
Yeah, I would say, I would, I will ask Director Bennett, the Director of Human Resources, to put together some information for you to be really specific and accurate. We are, of course, we've proposed a new education class at the, for the high school for next year, to start developing our young youth, you know, homegrown within, to, to become educators as they get older and hopefully stay within heights. As Director Niambwe mentioned, the, we have a staff affinity group, and we know that that's something that we launched this school year, knowing that retainment is crucial and may and will help in recruitment, you know, as, as our staff of color know, or are able to articulate that they are truly supported in our district. But I will ask Director Bennett to put together that information for you.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, thanks Molly. Director Niambwe, I know that in the slide, you had the breakdown of 80, 20, 10%. In our current breakdown, as you're presenting, are we under, I didn't see a slide that said we're actually under the 10% admin, is that where we're at?
Yeah, so the Department of Education will not approve a, a budget that has more than 10% in administrative cost, and so, yes, our current breakdown is less than 10%.
All right, thank you.
Can we understand what the, obviously we're at $12,000 less from last year's budget, is that due to enrollment or, or other figures?
I don't exactly know why it's less, but I know that the calculation of the integration, Achievement and Integration Funds take into consideration several factors. I, I think the population of students free and reduced lunch is one of them, compensatory education is another one of them, and there is probably other factors that are calculated into it.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Director Niambwe, we're thankful to have you tonight.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to summer programming with Directors Tuckrell, Frye, and Stunkel.
Okay, can you see my screen?
Gotcha.
Very good. Chair Severson, members of the Board, Superintendent Stenvik. I'm here this evening with Dr. John Frye and Director Tara Tuckrell to present our plans for this coming summer's programming. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And you'll see that that's present very much during our summer programs, just as it is during our school year. The core values that we're going to be presenting, there we go, this evening are community, excellence, collaboration, and innovation. This is an informational presentation to the School Board, there are no governance questions. So the goals for summer programming, we, we, we create these programs in order to meet many goals, including reading and math interventions, opportunities to earn high school credits, multilingual language learner support, opportunities for fitness, including aquatics, services that are required by individual educational plans, IEPs, opportunities for enrichment of all ages, high-quality childcare and mental health support. In our community education early childhood programs, we'll continue to have our Mini Adventures childcare that takes place at the Family Center, and that's a full-day program fee-based. We have many scholarships also for students in that program. We are going to be offering two ECFE classes this coming summer, and those will as much as possible take place outside, they'll be on Wednesdays, and that will be at the Family Center in Blooming Heights. We're introducing a new program, a nature-based threes program, that's already getting a lot of interest, and that's a program for three-year-olds that'll be outside, collaboratively taught between our early childhood teacher and also our agriculture specialist, Mr. Wes Nutrin. We'll also be doing our early childhood screening in August in preparation for the new school year. School-age community ed programs include our Summer Adventure Club childcare program that also will be located at the Family Center. Blooming Heights, through our Encore or our 21st Century Grant, will be able to hire four assistants to work in Blooming Heights, just as we did last summer. We'll also be initiating a new pollinator project, and that's also in collaboration with our 21st Century Grant. We'll be offering drivers' education so that our young drivers are safe out in the streets, and one will be on, an online offering, one will be in person, and then also water safety classes that we're eager to start again, which hopefully actually will start this spring and will go through the summer, and that's teaching water safety for school-age students. We, the Activities and Athletics Department works very closely with the Community Ed Department to offer sports opportunities throughout the summer. So we've got a number of them listed, strength training, football, basketball, dance, volleyball, swim, soccer, and lacrosse, and we're initiating a new program this summer that's going to be a summer sampler program for grades, the grades four through six. All of these activities and athletics, we're still finalizing the details, so we're not yet ready for registration, but this is what, what we are planning towards. yet ready for registration, but this is what, what we are planning towards. And now I'll hand the floor over to Dr. Frye.
Thank you, Director Stunkel. Chair Severson, members of the Board, Superintendent Stenvik, I get the opportunity to talk about special education programs, specifically extended school year service. Again, as you know, special education is a service that supports students, and it's not a placement, so to speak. However, we have an opportunity every year to be embedded within the Summer Encore program that occurs here in the district. And part of that allows us to ensure that we have students who have access to the general education peers as well as the general education standards. And so with extended school year, that is our K-12 programming, and with our early ECSE, we have students who we serve both in the home this summer, it'll probably be virtually, and/or at the Family Center. But also, we have students who are three to five, who are matriculating on to kindergarten, who we want to support during the summer as well. The other piece that we did last summer that I thought was really important was that onsite evaluations with the COVID pandemic. We had to, to delay some of our special education evaluations, and during the summer, we were able to bring some students in, and so we will continue to do that should that be in need. And the other piece for special education programming is that we worked with our school psychologists and psych, and social workers in supporting students with their mental health over the course of last summer, and we're going to continue to expand that and to really look at those students who need consistency and continuity over the course of the summer to support them as they, as they transition from one year to the next year. And then that's it for special education. I'm going to pass it on to Director Tuckrell.
Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the Board, Superintendent Stenvik. I'm going to share tonight about our plan for Summer Encore. Summer Encore has looked a little different over the last few years. Last year, it was all virtual. Prior years, we've had it in July or in June, and it's been from four to six weeks. And this year, we surveyed our staff to find out what are some things that we really could do to support more students in terms of Summer Encore. So we are going to offer three two-week sessions. They will be theme-based, so just as in the past, we really are going to focus in on academics, social-emotional learning, and a lot of fun. We really want our students to have fun while learning together. Our Summer Encore, we've expanded it this year due to the pandemic, and we're able to offer, were for incoming kindergarteners and all the way up to incoming ninth grade. So we're able to add a couple more grade levels this year, using some of our COVID funding that we have available, so that's exciting to support more students. And so our three sessions are listed there. We are going to be using Valley View and Columbia Academy for the first two sessions, and then moving to North Park and the high school. And we worked with Director Hennickens and his team to really look at what building projects are happening, and what opportunities do we have to use some of our new sites, like at North Park, to bring our students onsite there. We are offering virtual and onsite options. We have staff who are interested in both, and we really want to support our students in either way, whatever they're comfortable with and would like to do. And we had an amazing time virtually last year, so we saw that that was a lot of fun as well. So families will have the options to register with preference, preferences for virtual or onsite, as well as how many sessions they want to attend. And we really are trying to get as many students as we can be able to attend at least a session. And registration will really be based upon staffing and capacity, as Kristin mentioned We are going to continue our partnerships with the city, looking at the public library as well as the rec department, and then the Summer Reads Vista program to continue with Adventure Club. And some additional academic offerings this summer, our high school teachers are excited about offering an advanced placement boost, so we'll be getting some dates out for that one. As mentioned earlier, with Summer Seminar, a collaboration with St. Anthony for our incoming ninth grade students will be held in July, and that's onsite in Columbia Heights. Our home reading program, we're expanding it compared to previous years, really opening it up to everyone, so more information will be coming out on that one. We work with 916 to support our students in high school who need credit recovery in the summer. And then North Suburban Summer Academy has confirmed they're doing it onsite, so that'll be in Columbia Heights from June 15th to July 1st. And I believe registration for Summer Academy starts next week. And so we're excited for another great summer. We had a great summer with our students last year, pictures of them virtually, and some of the pictures of things we're able to do onsite. So we're excited for all the opportunities that we're able to offer our students this year as well.
All right, thank you to all of you. Any questions?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead, Lauren.
Wow, there's a lot going on this summer. So just thank you for putting all that together and creating so many incredible diverse opportunities for our students to continue to be engaged throughout the summer. As a parent, I will say, I should not hear my child tell me they're bored. I think that's what I got out of that presentation. But thank you. I mean, just, there is a lot, and a lot of planning and programming that goes into that, especially with doing both virtual and in-person options. So I just, I appreciate all that you have to offer.
Other questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you so much for being with us tonight. We're thankful to have you. We will move on to the policy first reading, and that's me. Our one, our one policy that was under revision, correct, is Policy 809, the COVID-19 face covering policy. And this will appear on agenda for approval, so if you are interested, whether you're in the community, a staff member, or anything like that, you're able to take a look at the policy and offer us feedback on, on that. So any questions or comments on the policy, which is attached? All right, let's keep going. We'll move on to School Board Recognition Week with Superintendent Stenvik.
All right, another fun topic. So this week is School Board Recognition Week, and the Columbia Heights Public Schools will join districts throughout the state to salute our local school board members during Minnesota's Annual Recognition Week, February 22nd through the 26th. The commemorative week is designed to recognize the contributions made by Minnesota school board members, including the Columbia Heights Public Schools Board of Education, who are charged with governing the public education under state law. Minnesota school board members are chosen by their communities through election or appointment to manage local schools. They oversee multimillion dollars worth of budgets, which fund education programs for more than 893,000 students in more than 2,000 schools. Their personnel decisions affect more than 58,000 teachers and thousands of administrators and support workers. Our deepest appreciation is extended to the dedicated women who make it possible for local citizens to participate in education in our community. We salute the public servants of Columbia Heights Public School Board of Education, whose commitment and civic responsibility make local control of public schools in our community possible. Please join us by saying thank you to our local school board members during Minnesota School Board Recognition Week. And normally, we would be in person, and we would hand out certificates and shake hands and take photos, but I will read the board members' years of service. So Hala Asamurai has been, has completed four years. Thank you, and congratulations, Hala. Mary Gramlin just joined us. Welcome aboard, Mary, just joined us in January. Welcome. Molly Lewis has completed six years on the, of service to the board. Thank you, Molly. Lorian Mueller has completed four years on the board. Thank you, Lorian. Natty Severson has completed five years of service. Thank you, Chair Severson. And Laura Palmer, 10 years on the board. Thank you for a decade of service, Laura Palmer.
Wow, congrats, Laura, 10 years.
So we'll get these certificates to you in a socially-distanced way, and we really, truly do appreciate this, the, all you do, the school board, or the schools couldn't run without all of your vision and your hard work and dedication. So thank you, school board members.
All right, thank you, Superintendent Stenvik. We appreciate that. And the chocolates and the bag that you sent home was nice. We, we often have a cookie here at our desk, which is, which will be missed, even the blue frosting on my teeth. I'll miss that. So thank you so much for that. We'll move on now to our action items. Our first action item is our learning model adjustment, and our presenter will be Superintendent Stenvik.
Okay. And I'll just note that Principal Robleski and Principal Burkus are also here.
Welcome.
We'll weigh in in a little bit as well. Our mission of Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And we're really focusing on all of our core values this evening in this discussion. So this evening, we are seeking approval to shift the learning model for grades six through 12 from modified hybrid to full hybrid prior to the start of quarter four, which would have been April 12. So our learning model phases are depicted on the screen, as you can see, and as always, regardless of the phase or scenario, families do have the, the opportunity to choose heights from home. So transitions between phases, I think this is where some clarification is needed. So transition to a more restrictive phase can happen at any time during the year due to an increase in COVID cases. The team reevaluates the plan each, each quarter, looking at local case rates, surveys, and whatnot. And prior to the end of the quarter, the school board will be asked to approve a transition if the local case rates are such that district, the district, a school, or grade level is able to operate in a less restrictive phase. And then between transitions, there's a planning time. According to MDE, districts can use up to five instructional days for staff to plan for the change in instructional delivery for this school year. So for that third bullet, I think this school year, we focused a lot on talking about quarter to quarter, and we really wanted to provide families and want to provide families with that time and that timeline to plan. We did way back in August at the board table discuss that, well, what if we were wanted, what if it wasn't going to be quarter to quarter? What if there was an opportunity to open up more? What would we do then? And that's where this language came to play, that we would come back and ask the board to vote on it, not just willy-nilly, open randomly, or, you know, one, from one week to one, to the next. So we really wanted to stay steady. I do want to recognize that this type of a change, because, you know, what we're proposing tonight isn't the end of the quarter, it's prior to that, it is uncomfortable. Change can be uncomfortable for people, and, and it takes, you know, sometimes it takes time to process that. However, throughout the pandemic, things have changed very rapidly. We've had to really be nimble and flexible and move and shift as we go. So I do understand that that's not easy. So these are the considerations that we have for moving the dial, right? We're looking at the guidance. So there's guidance coming from the governor's office, from the Department of Education, from the Department of Health, and this guidance changes and either tightens, loosens, or just completely changes, almost weekly, sometimes it feels like, right? Heights from home, we have every, every quarter, we have polled our families and surveyed our families if they want to remain in heights from home. We work with our regional support team, which are, is our public health officials, to help us make decisions that are safe and healthy for staff, students, and families. We also look at our staffing capacity, so we do support accommodations for our staff that have doctor's notes or underlying conditions. And then we daily look at our COVID-19 data, so we are analyzing those local case rates for community and school transmission, transmission. And newly, looking at staff vaccination. So as mentioned previously, this Friday, we will be able to vaccinate a large number, if not our entire staff, in Columbia Heights Public Schools. So the vaccines have arrived, they're at Inonaoka County right now in the, in their offices, and we are getting prepped and prepared for this vaccination clinic. So let's take a look at the local case rates that I mentioned that we analyze every, every day, and we have to collect and this data on a 14, we look at it every day, and we monitor it on a 14-day rotating basis, right? So this chart on the screen, this is the chart that we've been given as guidance from the Department of Education. And so you all remember when those cases spiked really high in November and December, and we were in that red zone for quite a while. Well, we've been out of the red zone for quite a while, as you can see. So for focusing on the secondary level, we've been in the yellow zone for about five weeks now. We are at the, we're currently at the 10 to 19 range, and we're at the very bottom of that range. So currently, our elementary schools would be in that green zone and have been now for about three weeks. And the high, the middle school and high school are in that hybrid, in that 10 to 19 range as well, and have been. So again, we follow this chart, we followed it when we were in the red, and we want to follow it now. Our local and county infection rates have steadily declined and, and remained steady to a level where hybrid learning can take place. So just looking at the timeline across the district, I put, we, there's green checkmarks by one, what's already approved by the board and, and our learning model. So today, we're really looking at, looking at grades six through 12 coming onboard. So again, staff planning days are required in order to transition to in-person learning. So on those, on those planning days, there's a lot of training that goes into play on how to do hybrid models. What does that look like? The Teaching and Learning Team are an incredible team of people with our tech integration specialists that are supporting the, the staff and, and all of that. Many, many logistical pieces, as you can imagine, planning, preparation, answering questions on a daily basis throughout that planning period. All right, so the different, one of the differences is that elementary classroom teachers are rescheduled to in-person only or heights from home only, because that's their classroom teacher, right? But as we know, at the secondary level, our students have up to eight different teachers, and so they will have concurrent instruction. So by and large, the secondary students' class schedules wouldn't change, and their teachers wouldn't change. And as I think many people know, Governor Walz announced that elementary school could return January 18. But as you can see on the screen, we didn't start bringing elementary students back on campus until February 1st. We wanted to do that out of an abundance of caution and, and making sure that we're planned and prepared and ready for that. Start small and stay safe, right? So this, similarly with secondary, we are able to bring students back February 22nd, but we're really proposing that that take place March 15th, just to give everyone time to plan and prepare for that. All right, so we have surveyed our families at the secondary level, and as you can see, the survey does, is still open right now. It hasn't, it will close tomorrow. What, one thing we've learned from surveying our families at the elementary level, when we make these kinds of changes, is we have to make a lot of phone calls as well, right? So we, we're, we're happy that we're getting responses from the online survey, but we also know we need to call and email and reach out to get more people. But as you can see, we do have over half of Columbia, well over half of Columbia Academy responses already in, with 53% of them choosing heights from home. And then, as you can see, almost 600 responses for the high school, with just over 56% choosing heights from home. So our next steps, as I mentioned, the survey closes tomorrow. We'll continue with outreach and phone calls. We need that time. You, you know, we wanted to start surveying early so that we could get some survey results back in order to create bus routes, ensure we're able to provide food service for, in, both on campus and for those folks who are heights from home, time for room preparation, and all of those other logistical pieces. We're also looking at a second entry option, opt-in option for quarter four, meaning we're asking right now families who are interested, who, who want, who, who understand that the case rates are such that maybe they want their, their child or their student to come on campus and learn, March 15th. We, we realize that that's earlier than originally planned, so we would send out another survey, which would be an opt-in survey later, a little bit later on, that, for, looking towards that quarter for April 12. So let's just look at a scenario of what a secondary class might look like, given our current, our current survey data, right? And we do, we don't anticipate the survey, the results of that survey to swing much. You know, we, we anticipate it will hover, continue to hover around that 50%. So on average, a secondary classroom is 30 students or less. So right now, if about 50% of our students are choosing heights from home, that leaves about 15 students in the classroom. And then if, for hybrid, if those are divided up into two groups, we're really looking at about seven or eight students in, in a classroom. And we know that we can have, depending on the, depending on the classroom, but the average classroom- average classroom, we can safely socially distance with about 20 students in there. And of course, class sizes vary and our staff have measured all of their, all of the rooms to ensure that we're socially distancing. So this proposal leaves us with well under that social, the threshold for socially distancing, given our current survey data. So supporting secondary students on and off site. So looking at the onsite learning, mask policy is a, is a requirement, right? Social distancing will be in place. Kids will have to remember to bring their charge device to school, just like last year, right? I mentioned classroom capacity. There's regular disinfecting and cleaning and in-person support, right? All students will continue to have strong instruction following state standards. All students will have live interaction and feedback with teachers, whether it's Zoom or in-person. Social, emotional and mental health supports and access to services such as English language learners or special education. Students who are off-site and heights from home will have additional support on those flexible learning days, support via Zoom during class and opportunities for support during those office hours that we've established this year. So communication will go out in a district-wide manner. Principals and teachers will communicate specific, specifically about, you know, student, specific student information and field those questions and answers. And then all important bus schedules, postcards would go out with information a week prior to starting. So looking at COVID-19 testing, vaccination and PPE, staff who work onsite are offered bi-weekly COVID-19 tests at school. So we've, we've, that's up and running and been up and running for our elementary programs and going very well. Vaccination, we've talked about vaccination this evening quite a bit, but this Friday, the bulk, if not all of our staff will be vaccinated, will have the opportunity to be vaccinated. And that second dose would be given to our staff prior to spring break. PPE, we were given by the state, delivered by National Guard. Student masks, staff masks and staff face shields and a lot of additional cleaning and safety measures in place, you know, really deep analysis of our air ventilation systems, our fresh air exchange and whatnot. So again, here, just review in summary, looking at our considerations for moving the dial. And if Principal Robleski or Principal Burkus want to weigh in on anything at this time?
Superintendent Stenvik and Chair Severson, members of the board. I guess I would just like to maybe speak from a principal's perspective and the kinds of conversations that I have on a weekly basis. I know that with our Heights From Home program, we have provided, I believe, a very high-quality program for students. And those who have really participated well in it have been able to learn each and every day. My concern, I guess, and my sense of urgency is for those students who have not necessarily done that. And so we do have lots of different scenarios that go on at any time when you have everyone in school or if you're doing heights from home. So we have tried many different kinds of interventions, including the small groups that have come in and have been in with us for a while now through our modified hybrid. But I, I think, as I look honestly at where some of our students are at, I think there's an urgent need to get those students back in in-person learning and to see if we can still make the very most out of the rest of the school year. Every day will count. And so I believe we are already doing all of the things that we're supposed to do in terms of keeping our building safe with the small number of students that have come in. We'll continue to do that. And we will certainly honor all of the decisions by families who choose not to send their child and keep our heights from home strong. But as Superintendent Kelly, or Superintendent Stenvik said, I have been a long time in the district, sorry. I think that we changed on a dime and some, some of our whiteboards in our, in our classrooms still say March 13th on them from last year. We closed up shop quickly based on data. And I think if there's one thing I've learned that we can do and we, we've done it, is we can make changes quickly if, if there's urgency. And I certainly am feeling urgency from the case or from those students, for those students who are not necessarily getting the most out of heights from home.
Thank you.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik. I would just like to echo what Principal Burkus has said. I like the ability of the choice that our families have to continue with heights to homes or come in for in-person learning. I, I think that choice, numerous emails have been sent and phone calls from students and parents echoing the opportunity to have choice. And I would just like to reiterate one more thing is that our staffs in Columbia Heights Public School Systems from pre-K to grade 12 are amazing in changing and making and fitting the needs of our, our families and our students. And I'm still proud to be part of this district in knowing that our, our staff, all our staff will do whatever it takes to make sure our kids are successful. So I'm, I'm very excited that our, our families have choice.
All right. So just in closing, we, you know, we did put out a plan last August. And since August, we've had to make a lot of changes. And we've learned a lot about how to mitigate COVID-19, right, safely. We've had children on campus this whole year. And many, many parents do want this choice to come back to school safely. And many parents want to continue with heights from home. And so I would just echo what Principal Robleski said about, about the choice. I don't have data to tell parents at this point that, that it's not safe to come back. All of the data is pointing to that, and for weeks and weeks now, that it's been safe to run a hybrid model. So again, this evening, seeking approval to shift the learning model for grades six through 12 from modified hybrid to full hybrid prior to the start of quarter four, April 12, as previously planned.
All right. Before we do questions, I'll need a motion to move this forward.
So moved.
Molly, second?
Second.
Lauren? We'll call it Lauren. Sorry, Laura, she beat you. It's the, it's the internet lag. All right. So that motion has been moved. Now we'll move on to questions and discussion. Mary?
Superintendent Stenvik, principals. I am curious, we've seen a lot of schools nationally and locally have to yo-yo between distance and hybrid. And one of the questions that I've received an awful lot is what additional safety measures, like specifically are, is our district taking to, to handle the influx of students coming in to both the high school and middle school?
So I can field that question and anyone feel free to chime in, of course. So we have signage for social distancing, whether it's spots on the hallway, X's on different chairs or seats in the lunchroom indicating, you know, assigned seats where people can sit. The scenario example that I gave provides for ample social distancing within the classrooms. And again, like I said, signage, fresh air, looking at our fresh air exchange and our filtration system for our HVAC, mask policy that's new this year. We have found that kids on campus are abiding by the mask policy. Of course, you know, the principals are there day in and day out with the students. They could attest to that more. So really following all of the required, the required elements, we meet regularly with, as an admin team, and I meet regularly with local 710 Teachers Union representatives and then other non-affiliated. And I ask them, what would make you feel safe? Is there anything else that you might need that would, that would make you feel safe? And so we do have a request form. Because of that supplemental funding that we got for CARES, for CARES Act, we're able to provide some of those pieces. So whether it's, you know, the glasses with the shield instead of the regular shield to, I mean, we've just learned all about all kinds of devices that are out there. Some teachers want thermometers in their classroom that they can, they can utilize. I mean, so we've, we've been asking folks, what would, what would make you feel safe? And here's, here's a mechanism to, to go about providing that for them.
We've had students in the building for the last, I believe, week, week or so. And we had them prior to, before Thanksgiving. And we've had hand sanitizer in our experience at the high school, and I'm sure it's the same at the middle school, is kids are anxious to get back and are really wanting to follow the safety protocols that we have in place in all of our material pickups in and outside of the building. The students have practiced as best they possibly can, the six, six feet social distancing with their mask. But the one thing that I've really seen is the hand sanitizing being used and really wanting to respect everybody's safety so everybody can continue to come to school and be safe. So hand sanitizer has been a big use at our school.
Maybe I would just add that masks are really monitored very closely. If a mask comes off, that's a problem. So kids don't come in if they don't have their mask. We do have masks to provide them if they forgot it at home. So masks and social distancing will be sort of the foundational pieces, I think, along with the hand sanitizer. And we have planned for that for every part of the day, I think, that we can, we will have to monitor, will have to continue to insist that those things take place. But again, we've been doing this now for, for quite a while with smaller groups. And I think that's given us good practice and it's given us the requirement to do all of these things already.
Thank you.
Molly, I see that hand. Holly, your next. Molly, Molly.
Sorry to say Molly.
Yeah, I said Molly, then Hala. You guys shot your hands up.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. So one of the questions I had, and I think I have a pretty good understanding because the learning will be concurrent, but as far as a schedule for the hybrid model, and I understand all of the complexities about not knowing how many kids are opting in, how many students will be in the buildings. But is it safe to say that their school schedule, the number of hours in the building would replicate what their school schedule typically is for periods, for four periods during the day? Or will that time be shortened similar to what we saw with the elementary schools a little bit?
Dan, or Principal Robleski, do you want to field that question?
Sure. Our, our daily schedule at the high school will stay the same. And I believe it's the middle school. So at the high school, it's 8:30 to 2:50. And it will change within a couple minutes within the day to make, so that we're able to serve students lunch during the day. But it's minutes that, that will change. So it will mirror what they're, what students are doing right now, yes.
And in addition to that, the Friday at the high school, is that going to be Heights From Home or a Distance Learning Day then?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And then we do have just, as the schedule comes at the high school and middle school, the high school has an SAT day, where that's 11th graders, and that's a Tuesday. That would be April 13th, and that day will be modified. So there'll be some modifications with some testing. And, you know, it ebb and flows as we go as, as testing changes. So other than those days, our schedule will, will stay as, as is.
Okay. Thank you.
Hala.
Columbia Academy.
Oh, sorry, Dwayne.
Sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. I was just going to say Columbia Academy's schedule as well will stay almost the same. We'll start at 8:45 for busing reasons, but then we will finish at 3:15. We'll still have the middle of the day. We'll move STAR to combine it with Highlander time because of that busing change. But really, the time for classes will remain almost the same as it is now within a few minutes.
Thank you, Beau.
Hala, thank you.
Okay. So first I want to say I really appreciate everybody's flexibility with going back and forth. And I know the amount of planning that goes on at the administrative level that goes into planning, how the models go and the schedules and all the logistics. And it's a crazy amount of work and to keep shifting is really hard. I also want to say that it is a priority of ours to provide families with, with flexibility, with an option, with the, with options, with things that work for their kids. And someone had said something about as soon as it's safe, why wait? If parents are choosing for their kids, then they're choosing things that they believe are safe. Staff need to have that kind of flexibility and freedom to choose what they believe is safe for them, even if they don't have a teacher's letter, a doctor's letter, I'm sorry, a doctor's letter. And I hear you talking about all the safety measures that you're going to be taking. Other schools and hybrid have been taking those measures. And having been inside schools, I see those measures and they're very stringent. And they're followed like to a queue, you know? And still, across the nation, places who followed those have had increased numbers. So that's not a sure deal. It's not a surefire way to keep everybody safe. So the things I'm thinking about here, the things I'm wondering about, and I'll just like say them all at once and then, you know. So do we have guarantees that every single staff member will be vaccinated for the first time before March 15th? And then after that, do we have a guarantee that the second set of shots is going to be available to them within three or four weeks? I know right now it's scheduled, but do we have a guarantee that there's not going to be some off-chance thing and then they don't have their shots and they're not protected anymore? And oh, here we got to go again. We got to do something different. Okay. And then another thing is, spring break is coming up. We all know what happens in spring break. We can recommend till the cows come home that families not travel. Families travel. Families travel to Florida. They've traveled to places where masks are not mandated, are not even really recommended. And then they'll come back and they'll bring stuff. If we were to wait till the start of the quarter, April 12th, I think it was, that would be approximately 10 days after the end of spring break. That would be the quarantine time, the recommended quarantine time according to the CDC right now. So that would help clear that part. The other thing that I'm looking at is I've seen where teachers have to teach simultaneously in two modes, where they have students in front of them and then they have other students online. And it's painful. It's painful and it's brain numbing. It pushes teachers to a point that it's just too hard. It's just way too hard to manage both at the same time. And I'm not saying that, that should it happen, because sometimes that needs to happen. But at least have it be at the beginning of a quarter, not towards the end of it where you're only, like, we're three weeks away effect, or not three weeks away, but it would start if we were, let me try that again. If we went back to hybrid March 15th, that's really effectively three weeks away from the end of the quarter. So that's, the teacher has to make some shifts in the mode of teaching. And that's a big change to make right there. You know, if they had time to do that before the start of the new quarter, that would make it a lot easier. Let's see. Yes. And that's everything.
All right. I'd like to give Superintendent Stenvik, do you have, do you, would you like to respond, respond?
Well, the, the question that I heard was, do we have a guarantee for vaccines? In meeting with Inoka County, yes, last evening, there are a large quantity of vaccines. And so we, and we're having, Inoka County will be receiving vaccines. My understanding is My understanding is regularly, right? And so, um, if for some reason everyone wasn't able to get vaccinated this Friday for their first dose, they would be on a list for the, you know, for the next round, for the next go around. It sounded to me when, when, as they were talking to us about the number of doses that arrived, that it would, um, that it would really cover our staff. In terms of the second dose, so yes, they would be, our staff who are vaccinated this Friday would have a second dose on, um, as scheduled, as you mentioned. But one thing that the Anoka County Public Health officials said yesterday is that there really is a little bit of a window, right? So I, I want to say it could be like with, it's supposed to be within four weeks, but there, according to their studies, there, there's a little bit of wiggle room. So if it's not exactly on the exact day, um, there's with, as long as it's within that window, we'll be fine. So, um, I know for this week at least, with inclement weather across the nation and the, the doses were traveling from out of state here, we weren't sure if they were going to arrive, but they did make it, they did arrive. So, um, um, it's hard to make any guarantees though, you know, if, if that's what I'm being asked to do during a pandemic because things do shift and change throughout. But, but I was, I felt very assured from Anoka County Public Health yesterday as they were training us on how to run this vaccination clinic with their support.
Molly.
Yeah. I just want to take a quick second to just, um, speak on, you know, just, just a comment. Um, you know, I, I understand there's some, there's some feelings about that, um, starting theme push up. But I also just want to recognize and really make sure people, people that are listening to this meeting know that we've heard from both sides. It's, it's very polarized. It's, you know, very one way or the other for a lot of families. Um, and, and I just respect the districts, um, you know, listening to the urgency of those kids that are doing distance learning and really, really struggling. A lot of this is kind of in, in my sense, almost minimizing that that month is a big deal for a lot of people on the other end of the spectrum. So turning two months of learning into three months of learning could make a big difference for a lot of, uh, our adolescent learners right now. So I really appreciate that. And I think just want to speak to, I appreciate, um, you know, both of you principals for being here and Superintendent Stenvik for being so responsive. Um, one of the big things for, for myself was hearing that now, you know, as we approach quarter four, families have really made that commitment to stay home and know that teachers are getting vaccinated and there's more opportunities for vaccinations that they could still opt in at a, at a later time as well potentially, as long as the numbers provide and all of that. Um, and so just a, just a huge thank you to our leadership and our teachers. And I know that we're asking a lot of our teachers right now, but I want to remember that we've already been asking this of our critical care workers, our custodians, our, you know, admin in the buildings, um, support staff, our special education teachers that have already been stepping up to this without any word on when vaccinations would be available. So, um, and our elementary school teachers. So just in appreciation and, and understand, um, you know, this decision isn't easy. Um, and we're not taking it lightly. I don't, you know, I don't, we don't have the, the perfect solution. Nobody does during this pandemic, but I think that we're doing the best we can with the information we have.
Yep. Go ahead.
Um, you know, I want to, Molly said several things that I wanted to say. And I, I think in hearing from the community members and the teachers who have emailed me and, and communicated with me over the past several days, I, I think the, the potential to opt in for fourth quarter, um, isn't, is an important one. So like you said, if, as, as long as there's kind of space available, the numbers allow to have that opportunity to make that shift at quarter time. Um, knowing that there are families who really, you know, I've got several emails of families who really just are looking to bring their, their students back on campus. And, and also understanding the, the safety precautions that, that need to be made and knowing that not to minimize what our elementary teachers and as Molly said, all of the folks who have been on campus. I look at what, how can we achieve what we're looking to achieve in a safe manner? Having seven to eight students in a classroom at a time and being able to social distance where people are wearing PPE seems like we're making it as safe as possible. I also want to recognize something that, you know, Hala said regarding the delivery method and, and knowing that our, and even I think Mr. Robleski had said too, that our teachers and staff are amazing and I know, I know it's hard. I'm not a teacher and it's not a, a job that, that I think I could do. And so I, I want to recognize that. I look at the flexibility and perseverance and responsiveness, uh, at last March as we moved into a new distance learning model. The changes and the, and the perfections that were made throughout the summer to come back and to do that really well. And, and knowing that, you know, we're looking at a different delivery system that is going to take some time, knowing that we've got a couple of weeks to, to get there. Um, and then the, the days that the M.D. has, has suggested are, are available for prepping and planning as well. It, I think Natty said, we look forward to when days are precedented again.
And more unprecedented.
And knowing that we are in unprecedented times and that, that models change and governors' directions change or recommendations change and policies change. I commend our teachers, our staff and our administration who have been flexible and have provided the perseverance along the way. And, and truly I believe have done everything, um, within their own power to provide a quality education for our students at a time of uncertainty and challenges. And, and know that they, I, I trust that they can continue to do that. And that, that as a board, we support our administration in providing the tools and the resources that are needed through our governance and policy to, to provide any support that our students and staff need as well.
Thanks, Lauren. Laura, I see you unmute there.
Uh, yeah. I just have one question. Is, are we looking at bringing 90% of our teaching staff back into the school? Or, you know, closer to 100? Or what are we looking at as far as staffing, especially at the, uh, at the secondaries?
Yeah. Secondary is a little bit different in nature because, you know, for elementary, we were able to designate one teacher for Heights from Home, say at fourth grade, and another teacher to be the in-person teacher with, at secondary because students have eight different classes. Within your, within what, yeah. It's, it's just a lot more complicated as you can imagine. And so, yep, staff would be in, staff would be in the, in the building unless, um, there was accommodation that we made.
That answer your question, Laura? I'm trying to see if you're, if you muted again. Sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. No. Yeah. That, that answers my question. Thank you.
Excellent. Mary.
Hi. Um, so I do want to talk about something, um, and, and sort of piggybacking on what's been said before is, um, you know, we've heard from, we've heard, heard from families. So I will say when we looked at this transition, uh, for elementary schools, I received one communication from somebody and they were in favor of it. I would say, I think as a board member, I have heard, um, infinitely more about this transition and overwhelmingly from the people that have reached out in all of the different ways. They, they want their kids back in school. They also want to stick with the plan that we had. And I think that looking at the communication that, you know, we've received as board members between the two different models, that there's a, there's a lot to be said there. I think that when we were looking at this for our elementary students, we had an incredibly impressive and robust response rate. We knew where our families stood and what they wanted. And it made the decision to move between models a lot more clear. I want kids back in school too. I want them to be safe. However, I don't feel like we have enough information right now in our survey results to make a decision that is in the best interest of our community and what our community voted us in here to make. And I, I don't think that having a survey now and then, you know, sort of figuring this out for two weeks and then, or figuring out for a week, going on break, coming back, those transitions are really hard. And it's hard for our staff. It's hard for our students and it's really hard for our families. I think one of the things that made our district so strong as we, as we talked about this was the, and, and however, however it was written, family is heard. We weren't going to be going to something, um, less restrictive unless it was on the quarter break. And to come back now, I think this is why we're getting so much, um, feedback from families. And I absolutely do not want to minimize how hard it is for families right now. Absolutely. It is incredibly hard and there are no easy decisions. However, I think that we owe it to our families to find out from more of them what they want because I do not think we have enough information.
Thanks, Mary. I can hear myself echo. Can you hear that? Because I muted myself. Oh, goodness gracious. Yeah. Thank you to all the board members for sharing your opinion. And if you have more comments, you, you can do that as well. I think for me, um, you know, I've been thinking a lot about this and I've been reading the emails. And I guess, um, maybe my emails and my communications with parents haven't been quite as cut and dry, lopsided, uh, one way or the other. I think I've heard an equivalent amount, amount probably, um, in both directions from teachers and from parents, um, which makes this hard. I, I want to acknowledge the difficulty of making this decision. It's not like a decision to make lightly or flippantly. We understand that as much as we want guarantees, there's inherent risk. You know, all of our choices we make, whether it's to go get groceries, our son kids to school. And for me, uh, being married to a teacher, it's a, it's a, I've heard from him firsthand about, um, you know, the, the teaching. He goes back on Monday in his district and, um, learning to teach in a new format where some kids are present and some kids aren't. But that is stressful to him and I want to acknowledge that, um, for our teachers that we're not asking them to do something that's easy. For our staff, for our coming back and all the new rules. And I can only imagine how much it's going to take to organize just, just doing lunch. You know, like what our food service and our aides are going to have to go through, teaching assistants to, you know, just, just implement these things. I don't want to make it sound like this is the easiest thing or the greatest thing that we could be doing as a district. But I also want to say that, I also understand that there are some kids that are in some deep struggle right now. Hybrid, not hybrid, distance learning hasn't, hasn't gotten well for them. They're struggling in, with their mental health. They're struggling with their education. They're struggling to pass classes. Um, and for those kids, I am wondering, as I, I think that's the, where it's coming down for, for me is that balance of, of risk to, to benefit to those students. And again, personally, I do not take this decision lightly. I hear, I hear each and every one of you, the board members who have spoke and I, I hear your compassion and caring for our staff and our students. And I appreciate that about our board. I hear that from principals, Burkus and Robleski and Superintendent Stenvik. And so I just want to put out there that I think people are just trying to do what's best for our students and our, our, our teachers. And we weighing a lot of things in balance as we do that. Yeah. I don't know if I had a point there. I definitely don't have a question. That was 100% comment, um, which I will acknowledge. But I thought I would also share kind of where I sit on this. And I just want teachers to know, I understand, um, that this is stressful. I've heard that from my home. I've heard that. I can only imagine, again, not a teacher, don't claim to be one. And I deeply respect people have made that choice vocationally. Do we have any other comments or, or thoughts here before we take a vote?
I'd like to toss, uh, an amendment to the motion on the floor.
Okay. So you are making a motion to amend.
Yes. That one.
Hold on. I gotta pull out my cheat sheet, Mary. Hold on. I got all these, you know, this folder you never use, that's always in front of you. This is why it's there. All right. We might have to call on Dawn for this. So we'd like to, um, you're, you're making a motion to amend the motion. So I'm assuming we have to know, um, what, how you want to amend. Is that correct? Dawn, can you flip on your camera and just be there for me on this one, please? Dawn, if you're new to us, is our resident Roberts Rules of Order expert. So if we're in a, what's this one?
She'd have to make the motion.
She has to make a motion for the specific amendment. All right, Mary. So if you could please make a motion for your specific amendment? And then we have to vote on whether or not we want to make that amendment.
In the absence of having its, um, robust survey information, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, hold off on voting whether or not we return on the 15th until after the survey results, uh, after the survey's been closed.
So you are, want to postpone this, this motion? Is that what you're saying?
So she's not voting, so we're not making a motion to amend it. She's motioned to table it.
She's, you're motioning to either table the emotion or to postpone the motion?
It would be postponed.
So that you're muted. If, I think what you're asking for is a postponement till after tomorrow, essentially?
Yes.
Okay. So can you please restate your motion?
I would like to postpone the vote until we have more results from our families, until after the survey is closed.
Okay. So you either have to give a date, I think, or you, or it's postponed indefinitely. Correct, Dawn?
Correct. But she did say after the survey.
After.
Just tomorrow.
Okay. So the motion then is to postpone this vote until after the information is collected tomorrow. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. She would need a second on the postponing of the vote. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right. Dawn, can we have a discussion on a postponement?
Yes.
All right. Discussion.
I just have a question, Mary. What would you be hoping to differentiate between the numbers we have right now and then what it would be at closing? And how would that impact your decision?
I want to make sure that we are hearing from, um, a larger majority of families and to make sure that everybody's voice is heard. I know that it, there's a lot of work that goes into, um, from our Edmonton day work. Everybody in leadership worked really hard to contact families when we looked at this question for our elementary schools. And I think that that is partially a big reason why we had so much success with it. If we're going to move forward, I'd like to make sure that we have, um, a large majority of support for this from, um, the community because, you know, we are tasked with making sure that their, um, that their children and the people that they care about are safe. And so again, I, I think that it is well worth our time to make sure that we are hearing from, um, a large majority of people. I do not think it is realistic to expect that we are going to get 90%. I do think that we, it, I think that we need more than what we have. More information than what we have to make this decision. I just don't think we have enough.
As much as I, oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I thought you were done. There must've been a little egg. As much as I appreciate the desire to know what the community wants, unfortunately, I don't think that's what that survey represents. I think the survey that is out there right now represents what people would like to do on behalf of their child, not their opinion on sending kids back to school or not. Um, the survey asked me, do I want, do my kids want to continue in distance learning? Or do they, they want to participate in, um, uh, back in the buildings? It's not a survey asking them, do they, do you think it's a good idea? Or a thumbs up or thumbs down on the idea of kids returning? And so as much as I, I hear you and I guess we could say, um, it would, it would be representative that when I've, when, when we discussed our kids' options with them, that's not what we had in mind. Were we, were we sanctioning or not? in mind, were we were we sanctioning or not sanctioning the return to school? Laura, I heard you unmute there.
Yeah, I actually I have a the the motion is is to to a certain extent, a little vague for me, because I don't know what day we would come back to to be able to vote on this again. So I would assume that it would be at our next board meeting, and that would put us into into March, wouldn't it?
Our next full board meeting is the second Tuesday in March.
March 9.
March 9, yes. So that is that is quite a bit of time. So is that what we're suggesting here? Or are we looking at having an emergency board meeting and with posting? What what are we what are we thinking?
Well, right now, we don't have on our agenda to to have an emergency meeting. We have no we have no special call meeting. So unless we decided to do that, which would is it another? Dawn, is it another motion to add a meeting or just an announcement with enough time?
If if you have an emergency such as this, maybe you could do it with just announcing and posting plenty of time.
Okay.
I think it's not realistic to expect that we can we would have our teachers return on even smaller of a break if we were to come back on the 9th. I think that it would have to be a special session. It's, you know, it's not ideal. However, again, I do think if we want to hear from our families and what what they want for their child, I think that this is I think that we should take a little bit more time and gather a little bit more data.
Xena, what was the percentage of response that we have so far? I don't remember.
Yep, so it's over, let me pull the numbers, 462 from Columbia Academy, which has just over 700 students, and then 595 at the high school, which has about 1,000 students. So over half for both of them. When we and I know Director Tuckroll's on the on the Zoom call right now, and so she may have more accurate data than I can. But as I recall, as we've gone through these surveys and did the initial, we've always done this initial online survey, and then we know that we have to call and call and reach out to families. And so, of course, that's part of the plan. In fact, that's part of the plan for when folks aren't getting vaccinated on Friday, they'll be making these phone calls. But we haven't really seen the data swing much. So it's it's really just been around this 50%. So as I mentioned earlier, we're not anticipating the percentages to fluctuate by much, perhaps up or down a little bit. But we're really guesstimating, based on our experience of all these surveys this year, is that at the secondary level, about 50% will choose heights from home. And that's what we're seeing again with the more than half of the respondents right now. So that's that's what we're anticipating. That's what the trend has been.
Lorian.
Yeah, I want to reiterate that, and Mary, I appreciate your comments and wanting to make sure I'm I'm a lover of data myself. I want to reiterate, I think, what Natty said, too, is I have had communications with community members who have students who more than one student in the secondary where they have answered the survey, where one student is looking to continue to do heights from home, and one student is looking to do the returning to campus. And trying to establish what our community wants, to me, we're not doing a survey based on should we should we send students back on campus as of the 15th? It's what are you choosing for your child? And it may be different depending on which child, you know, it it is. And so I think as a board, looking at what our roles and responsibilities are in terms of following the case rate data and the requirements that we have there and and what the daily counts are is is kind of where we need to make our decision. And knowing that at this point in time, if we say 60% of our students' families have responded to the survey, and of those 50% are roughly choosing to have a return to campus, then if I guess I I don't know, I guess I'm I'm not, I don't feel like the survey that is out there right now and the response is going to get us any more information in terms of who is in is in favor of us coming back on the 15th or not. It was a student-specific choice on what you're doing, what you choose for that child.
Molly.
Yeah, I just want to kind of follow up on what Lorian was saying and just state that, like hypothetically, even if the survey data swayed to 75 and 25, because at this point, with half the information being collected, that could be a potential, right? Like, well, we still have 25% at minimum then of our students opting in, and the other families have the ability to opt for distance or heights from home. That being said, I think another really big factor might be that some families are waiting until we have this board meeting to make a decision to complete that survey. And so I think that would potentially complicate things a little bit. So I feel like I have enough information to to do this vote tonight, and yeah, so.
All right, any other thoughts before we vote? All right, Laura, roll call vote. This is the motion was to postpone. Dawn, can you read it back to me?
Yes. Postpone the vote until after the survey comes in tomorrow.
All right, that is the postponement motion. So Laura, could we get a roll call on that motion, please?
Samurai? Yeah. Mueller?
No.
Lewis?
No.
Grandland?
Yes.
Severson?
No.
Palmer? No.
Motion does not carry, so we'll go back to the original motion, which is, let me reread it from Superintendent Stenvik, the local COVID case rates have steadily declined, and the secondary level has been in the hybrid category on the MDE chart for four weeks. The low case rates, along with the new guidance from the CDC and the updated Minnesota State Learning Safe Learning Plan, are all caused from mid-quarter shift to a less restrictive learning model. And we have a motion, that motion is still on the table with with a first from Molly and a second from Lorian. Is that correct, Dawn?
Correct.
All right, more discussion on that motion. All right, hearing none, we will do a roll call vote for the less restrictive learning model.
A Samurai?
No.
Mueller?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Grandland?
No.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer? Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you all for a healthy debate and for being willing to share your points of view. Appreciate that. We will now move on to the North Park rebranding information with Principal Sasek and Directors Niemwe, Tuckroll, and Stunkel.
Good evening, Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenvik, members of the board. I am here tonight with Principal Sasek, Director Tuckroll, and Director Stunkel. And we are seeking approval for the North Park Elementary School name change to North Park School for Innovation.
All right, thank you. We received, sorry, I'm moving things around. We received a an update on this last week at our, was that our our work session, correct? Is that when we heard about this, or is this two weeks ago now?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago. Thank you all for joining us. So Bondo, sorry, Director Niemwe, put the motion on the table. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
Some moved.
Hala.
Hala, second?
Second.
Second from from Laura, thank you. Discussion.
Comment?
Thanks, Laura, go ahead.
Thank you for keeping North Park.
That was unanimous on the team. There wasn't a single person there that was going to let go of that.
Excited. Personally, I'm excited to see this take off, and I think it's descriptive of what my kids experienced when they were at North Park. So and I'm really excited to see how the new space really accentuates your ability to see kids innovate. How fun is that for educators to just watch watch kids innovate and, you know, this is exciting for me. But that's not what we're here for. Any more discussion on the renaming? All right, hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Samurai?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer? Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thanks for waiting, North Park crew, we appreciate that. I will now move on to building capacity with Executive Director Niemwe.
Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenvik, members of the board. I am here tonight seeking approval for the reopening of the 10th grade at Columbia Heights High School to non-resident agreement effective immediately.
All right, thank you. We'll need a motion to move that one forward.
Some moved.
Lorian, second?
Second, Molly.
Second, Molly, great. Discussion. All right, roll call vote, please.
Samurai?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer? Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. The 2021-2022 school calendar, welcome, Lindsay Bennett, Director of Human Resources.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik, presented at the last board meeting was the 2021-2022 school calendar. Again, we worked with a committee to put the calendar together, and the main charge, again, is to provide a calendar that's in the best interest of our student learning, along with following our contractual obligations. So tonight here, I'm seeking approval of the calendar.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion on that one?
Some moved.
Oh, we'll give this one to Molly. Second, I couldn't hear who the other per-
Second. It was me.
Oh, Mary, hey, I can see you there. Thank you. All right, discussion on the school calendar.
A comment?
Go ahead, Laura.
As always, thank you so much to the team that puts this together. This is a lot of work, and I'm very grateful that you, and it looks really good, too, by the way. So thank you, good job.
Thanks.
Second, what Laura said, I've been on the calendar committee before, and it's it's fun and also you learn an awful lot about the things that you need to sort of know and keep in mind about, you know, teacher contract days and, you know, student instruction days. And so just kudos to everybody who worked so hard to put that together. So thank you.
Yeah, all the lenses that you have to see from, to all the screens you have to see from to organize this well, it's not easy. So thank you to the team and to the volunteers who served on that committee. Appreciate you all. Any more discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Samurai?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer? Aye.
Motion carries. On to the next page. Teacher and EFC, ECFE, it's always been a tough one for me, teacher seniority list. Again, Director Bennett.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik, each year, per the teacher master agreement, we have to post the seniority lists for teachers and for the ECFE teachers and give them 30 days to ask any questions. So we did that posting. Any questions that came up were resolved. So tonight, I'm here seeking approval of both the teachers and the ECFE teacher seniority lists.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to move that one forward, please?
Some moved.
Lorian, second?
Second, Palmer.
Laura, discussion. Lindsay, you always ask the typical, you answered the typical question for us this time, which is, do we have any reason to think this is inaccurate? And you already did that for me, so thank you. All right, roll call vote, please.
Samurai?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer? Aye.
Motion carries. On to the seniority list approval, again, with Director Bennett.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik, also according to the master agreements, we have to post the seniority lists for education assistants, lunch duty monitors, food service, clerical, and custodial employees. This is manual part of their contract. We post them for the number of days we had to, which was 30. And any questions that did come up, we were able to answer them. So the ones in your packet are agreed upon by the units. So tonight, I'm here seeking approval of the seniority lists.
All right, I need a motion on this one.
Some moved.
Hala.
Hala, second?
Second.
Second is Lorian. Discussion. All right, a roll call vote, please.
Samurai?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer? Aye.
All right, motion carries. Last motion of the night is the principal contract, and that will again be Director Bennett alongside Director Hennekenz.
Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik, tonight, we are here to present to you the 2020-2021 principal master agreement. We've discussed this in the past at board meetings. The contract would include a salary increase for both the principals and the assistant principals. Besides that, there's no other changes to the contract. They've ratified it and signed off. So tonight, we're here seeking approval of the principal's contract.
All right, thank you. A motion on that one.
Some moved.
Laura, second?
Second, Mary.
Mary, thanks. Discussion. Thank you to all who went through negotiations on this one and took the time to do that. All right, roll call vote, please.
A Samurai?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Grandland?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Palmer? Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, thank you all for coming. We're going to move on to board topics. I guess I'll kind of lead us off with our discussion of where to continue in our board goal of growing in understanding of issues regarding race. For those of you tuning in, we just finished reading a book together called How to Be an Anti-Racist. I think our discussions have been good. I know that even beyond our discussions, I've been learning a lot, and I really did enjoy our discussion at the work session last week. It was people, people were impacted by the last third particularly. So it was really cool to have that discussion, and and it felt motivating and a little empowering that that policy changes things. And so excited to continue our discussion. We had options brought to us that were in your board packets last Friday. I, of course, forgot to bring that, so I don't have the choice list in front of me. But did anything, as you guys examined those, did anything stand out to you? We kind of had a shout, should we invest in another book? Should we have somebody come in? We were kind of waiting for our full board to be back together to make this choice. If we feel like we're not equipped to do that this evening, if everyone's, you know, had a lot, we can we can make that- make that decision at our November ninth meeting as well. How are people, how are people feeling about the decision?
Just to clarify, you said that we were going to have this, we were going to make a decision on our November
Oh, yep.
I think you meant March?
I absolutely-
You're not putting it out that far.
I, I absolutely meant March. Thanks for the congratulations, uh, congratulations, correction. Oh my goodness, um, sorry. I don't know what part of my brain can't do that. I also often, um, flip January and July, just so you guys know. So if I tell you I'm going to do something and it's July and I say January, I probably meant July, so. Thanks for understanding, everyone. No worries.
So are you asking for suggestions?
Yeah, suggestions.
Or are you wanting us to think about it?
I'm asking for suggestions. I, I, my, my preference would be to make some choices so that we can continue to move, but if we don't feel like we can have, we don't need to vote on it, we just need to agree, because we voted on the goals, so, yeah.
I, having attended, um, a training by Dr. Mohammed Khalifa, I feel like it would be just invaluable to have that if we had, uh, if we had him as a speaker.
Are you thinking like, um, we would do that at a work session, or we would attend something he was putting on? We could ask, um, Superintendent Stenvik to look into that for us. What do other people think of that suggestion?
I think that would be phenomenal, but, um, I don't know about cost, and if, if we did, I, I think that it would be a greater benefit to open that up to staff as well, um, especially being that it would probably be in a virtual setting at this time. So I, it just seems like, I, I, I appreciate that. I, I think he is great. Um, I think there's a lot of, you know, good speakers, but if we spend the money, because that would likely have funding attached to it, that would be my only concern.
Okay.
I would just, I'm just going to chime in, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
With the, um, the suggestion of Dr. Khalifa, one, one thing that was nice about How to Be an Anti-Racist is that it was aligned to what staff in the district were doing. With Dr. Khalifa, we've had him present to staff, um, all licensed staff, elementary and secondary, last spring. And then this, remember I mentioned that grant that we were awarded? So this upcoming fall, all admin will get to do that. The training that, um, member Samurai has, has already got to participate in, it's two and a half days, so it would provide that alignment, if, if that's what the board was seeking.
Okay.
And then in terms of, I, we can certainly check on what a cost would be for a, a one-time, uh, you know, whatever.
Okay.
But there are, there, and, and there, we could send that in with the board packet with the, the board's budget. So this wouldn't be taking, there's a, there's a funding that's set aside for the board, so it wouldn't be taking away from teachers or anything like that. I just want to clarify that.
It would be-
Thank you.
Coming out of our board budget.
The board.
Which we get updates on.
Right.
Okay. Are we comfortable, oh, go ahead, somebody else, Molly, and then Mary?
Yeah, I was just going to add on then, that if it's available in our budget, I fully support that. I think that would be wonderful, and I would be really excited to, to participate in something like that.
Mary, you were going to say something, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I absolutely concur, and I do like the idea of, um, as we're being asked to set policy, again, being in alignment with what we're asking staff to do and what we're having them do. I think it just makes really good sense, so I think that that would be something that we should absolutely be looking into.
All right, Laura, are you comfortable with that? I can't see if you're nodding.
Oh, I, I am nodding. I keep muting and unmuting.
Okay, go ahead.
My nodding. And no, I, I think that sounds great if we can, if we can, uh, if we can swing that, um, and it would be, I, again, you know, reiterating, reiterating, I can't talk either this evening, what everybody else is saying is that we definitely need to be in alignment with, uh, with, uh, what our staff and administration is doing. And, um, I would be, um, uh, equally intrigued, um, about looking at, uh, about asking more questions with regards to policy and, um, how we can be more equitable. So, uh, it would be, that was, that was the one thing is, is being, that I really wanted to have is to have, um, have, um, some real authentic feedback on, uh, where we can improve.
Great. Lorian, did you have thoughts?
Definitely agree.
Agreed, okay. Um, so Superintendent Stenvik, would you mind doing a little research for us, please?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. It's cool to think, um, to be in alignment with staff and administration, that the common language just helps to have the same, you know, vocabulary. I think of how helpful the book was in creating vocabulary around topics, so we know what we're talking about. I'm, that makes me excited, so. All right, other board topics. All right, hearing none, we will adjourn this meeting at nine twenty-four PM.